What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're looking at the button strategy when it comes to facing opens. So let's start to look at versus under the gun, this first strategy here is a twenty-five big blinds. This one is at forty big blinds. And this is how we should be playing from the button at a hundred big. So this one here on the right is the low jack. So button versus low jack open, twenty-five big blinds, forty big blinds and a hundred big blinds. So let's see how our strategy change when our stack that change and when the opponent changes in front of us as well. At twenty-five, like we're jamming a little bit here, right? And then the jamming range doesn't really change. Whether you're against under the gun or low jack. So the wheels. The wheels start to appear. Later the positions get. So this is against the low jack, so let's, let's see against the, just for fun. Say we were. So this one is twenty-five, perfect. So say we're against the cutoff. Which is exactly this one actually. How does it change again? So against the cutoff, we're throwing the pairs. So seven, six, five, four, so the later the position, the, the opener is, the more we can rip pairs into him. The earlier the position, the, the razor is, the less we can just stuff our person, makes sense. Now. It's funny to see ace ten off, right? And three betting more against under the gun and less against the cutoff. Alright, so our three bet bluff range. Shift. It's, it's actually gone, we don't three bet as much small. Against the cutoff, we're just ripping his face. Then we just rip more often. But the play is not to have combos, it's just to rip more often.
So this might be like king ten, queen ten and jack ten are pretty good. And, and they might not want to call and then have to fold to a squeeze maybe.
Yeah, that's the main difference, right? This block here doesn't want to jam against AP. And then the more later the positions get, the more you get to jam suited tens.
Yeah, we're facing a wider range as well, yeah.
Morning everyone.
Morning, John. So the other thing. The wheels disappear a little bit, but there's more of them. That's funny. Now let's look at here twenty-five, forty big blinds. Yeah, okay. So at forty big blinds, we don't have a ripping range anymore, too many chips. Now let's see how our strategy changes against under the gun. Those ace ten off, king jack off. And then we want to use suited nines and suited eights. Then this block here doesn't really give action. Against the low jack now. This block is not giving action. This block is three bet bluffing a lot. We are going suited nines and suited eights again, so it doesn't really change if you know you're suited nine then suited eights. You should be good here against AP. And I guess the cutoff, it's not suited nines anymore, it's more like suited sevens and then a mix of suited eights and suited sixes.
I usually just find the kings, those high-low kings, I don't really mess around with the sevens and the jacks, I don't find them.
Well, they're opening off suited nine, so you're gonna pull from your suited eights and sevens.
It walks up, it walks up, like it uses queen eight suited, queen seven suited, queen six, then it goes king five, king four, ace three, ace deuce, like the the higher your high card, the lower your kicker, that's kind of how I think of it.
It's like stairs, right? Yeah, normally when I do, I do, what he said, the, the higher the card, the lower, so I can find the seven, if I have an ace, I usually raise the ace seven, ace six and five, stuff like that.
It's more like queen six and seven.
Yeah, especially in ICM, this holds true too.
So the, the later the position gets, the more you want to use the dirty queens and the dirty kings. Right? If you don't really do it. Use king ten against EP, but like the later the position gets. This dirty, dirty blocker thing appears, so that's the bluff here, right?
Which makes sense, right? Cause you're targeting the bottom of their offset range, just their auto folds.
Yeah.
So you're gonna pull from these junky suited combos, you still have playability and you unblock the bottom of their range.
Yeah, you use a slightly worse hand, right? That you're trying to get to fold. So. This is forty big blinds, so suited nine, suited eights, and then suited eights, suited sevens, and then suited sevens and king, queen, rags, high lows. Okay, and then at the hundred big blinds now. Here. No. Yes. Right. So that's the button strategy at a hundred big blinds. A lot of suited jacks against under the gun. Suited tens. And this block here. We still bluff a lot with ace ten off, but no ace nine and this portion here. It's kind of different, right? King, jack, queen, jack. They're not really bluffing here against AP. We have other scenarios. But there often are.
I don't even defend it like jack ten, queen ten, king ten. Queen, jack, like I rarely even put chips in there.
Yeah. Against the, what's the difference? So here it seems to be three betting a lot more against the low jack than it is against the other the gun, right?
That's a lot of three betting.
A lot more range, so frequencies goes up a lot. We don't really use spares here, this deep. But the later the position gets, the more we kind of do it, suited connectors. Become heavier and heavier. The later the positions get. So here. King, seven, king, six, that's a laggy a little bit.
So why do we think we're three betting so much of the range? Like almost every combo's got a little weight to it.
Yeah.
Yep. So it's just the ISO and keep the blinds out of the hand, I'm imagining, and play heads up, right?
I think it's because you're just so deep that your linear range is gonna increase, so you need to balance that with bluffs. And it gives you more just playability on different runouts, especially like this low stuff that, um, like this, it's suited, uh, gappers and stuff. Um. You're not gonna see these at shallow, we're stacked up, but when you're a hundred big blinds deep and you three bet, you're looking, it's still SBR so deep that you need to have board coverage pretty across all runouts. And you're just looking for a hand that could like make the nuts most of the time, and this offsuit junk, you're just targeting, again, targeting auto folds. This is the same, like pretty much cash game strategy, um, you three bet a lot of the offsuit stuff and then like your lower suited stuff.
Yeah, I think you nailed it, it's all, all about board coverage really. Yeah.
So deep stack which can three bet a little bit of everything we want to play basically, especially late position against late position.
Alright, I got a phone call about a job.
Ooh, someone hiring you Ken?
No.
I mean, yeah, it's like.
So suited eights. About. And then now suited eights have to play basically when you're the button. And then
It's just gonna be slivers of everything.
Yeah. Even down to some suited sixes. Okay. So let's give it a try.
Yeah, a hundred deep is where you need the randomizer.
Yeah, I agree. It's same as like BBB in some spots where like, well, don't want to raise it this time, sure, why not?
Yeah.
Hey, okay.
Could it be the same thing like just, uh, so like just use, I had heard a video one time, it said just use the like the spades of the day or whatever, you know? And that'll hit you.
You can do that too, you can mix by your combos.
Yeah, like I'm gonna do all the spades, I'm gonna do all the, these, you know what I mean, or something like that.
A good way to randomize in live for sure.
Yeah, I've been doing a little more of that lately, um. Cause I, on I used to use Jerojan, but I don't anymore, uh, so I don't have any RNG. So I've been kind of like randomizing what suit I pick for the day, or like two suits, I guess, and then like if it's a twenty-five percent RNG, then it's like if my high card is that suit, or if the first card is that suit, can do it. If it's like fifty percent, then you take either suit. Et cetera.
It's a pre flop, but it becomes an issue like I think on the river.
That's true. Yeah, it's like, well, I have a high roll combo pre, so then am I, am I gonna triple it off? Cause I still have a high, like I'm technically like rolling high post straight.
So this is probably a good, good spot to three bet?
Either way.
Either way.
I mean, it's, it's gonna mix, so we should just try to get the frequency, right?
I think it's gonna call like eighty percent, three bet like twenty.
I think it's gonna raise the nines.
Okay, yeah. You can three bet the forty percent, wh- which line do you guys want to play?
I use that.
Are we trying to practice, uh, three bet pots or anything like that?
Just the button in general, again, at various stacked up against.
Right, well, then I want to jam.
Let's just use the
Let's three bet.
Let's see, we rolled a thirty-six, so call, I don't know, too late.
Too late. Okay, that's pretty good. So two high cards, flush draw. Think we want to bet at least half pot.
I would have went small cause
At least.
Like half pot here, it's a dynamic board with two tone, half pot or seventy-five, I think mostly half. I don't think we're gonna be betting small here a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna go small, yeah, yeah, twenty-five.
Yeah, a good trick for each one, if there's a flush draw, you're gonna size up a little bit more, and then if there's two high card, you size up a little bit more. Then if you're at, like, this is a good top pair, so you want to size up a little bit more.
Yeah, and there's a lot of straight draws too for both ranges.
Yep. I think it's maybe even more important than the flush draws.
This is a good turn, feels bad.
I would barrel again to try to buy river. You can still get value from Mars.
Are you like downsizing? Cause it's getting risky or?
Probably go half pot again.
I think I'm checking, I think I'd rather bet like king, jack than king, king. We'll have a lot of two pairs.
Checking isn't a good option, the pot is already pretty big.
Yeah, pot control.
I think checking makes sense, I, like, we can bet ace, king, bet king, jack, bet king ten.
I think it's gonna mix, right? No, I think it's gonna mix.
It's basically our worst.
Fifty percent checking, fifty percent betting again, if we bet, what's the size we use the most?
We're gonna polarize on this, um, but I think it's gonna check like eighty percent of the time or more.
Okay, and then do you want to go half pot? Or you, are you downsizing?
I'm not downsizing when I'm betting, I don't think it really makes sense.
Yeah, half pot.
I like checking half.
I normally would check, but if I'm gonna bet, I'd have.
Wow.
Never checks, never bet.
It is polarizing, always.
It's too much out there to protect.
Like it's just too far down in our range now. And I guess we do have like king, six, see, that's, I mean, that is a straight draw though.
But we also have like, we have ten X, right? We have jacks and queens, we have.
Yeah, it wants to get it wants to get value before the board changes, because the board is gonna change a lot on the river, we're not gonna be able to call a bet very easily.
Okay, so it said what, pot?
It said seventy-five percent or pot.
Oh, so, okay, a big, a big ass weak blast.
And he's gonna jam, oh, no.
Yeah, check.
Check, snap check.
Wouldn't he dunk jam if he hit this?
Uh, it could still have straights. Two pairs.
Yeah, check is good.
Can have an eight, dude. Suited eights are gonna call the three bet.
Would you jam?
No.
No.
Here check, and right?
Here check.
Two streets, it's enough. Would you jam, would you jam like the five or spade? Or the five or diamonds?
No.
I would not. You mean pocket fives?
King, five?
Even have them?
No, he's saying like this hand if the river was a brick.
Oh.
Shit.
Yeah.
Oh.
I still wouldn't.
I think you, I think you do.
I'm not playing, go for it. I'm not stacking off a hundred picks with a single pair hand on this board.
Yeah, I think I'm checking, I think it's close.
I wouldn't shove. I mean, what are you gonna, I mean, you're already pretty much ahead and if, and if you shove, you're only gonna get called by a better hand, I think. I just, I think defeats a purpose.
You know, on a brick river, I think, well, like, you still want to check back king, but you want to like bluff some single pair hands, maybe like jack ten or something, pocket jacks maybe.
You're only getting called by king, jack.
That's, so, yeah, hands that like
Queen ten, jack ten.
Yeah, hands with a jack or a ten, you're a good bluff.
Fix it in. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're just range jamming.
Good enough.
Okay.
People call you with random stuff, man, I've been surprised to get called by, looked up by second pair in that spot.
Jam to see what they're supposed to call with, it's just the best.
Well, we're range jamming, so we're jamming eighty-five percent of the time, so he's gonna have to defend pretty wide. It's a half pot jam.
Like jack ten with a spade or something, I'm trying to think what he gets there with. Or that.
So eighty big blinds now. Against AP, okay, so this portion is not gonna play much against AP, do I have calls? It's just majority fold?
No.
I like the fold.
This is mostly a three bet, some calling, I don't think it folds.
As a low jack.
You want, you have, you have button, you have no, no one's gonna jam behind you or anything, everyone's deep, so. They don't want you to fold.
Can't be.
There's logic, I think you fold there from the gun, gun or under gun one, but.
He's gonna call. I think he's gonna call like eighty percent of the time and three bet like twenty.
I'd say three bets more than calls. So three bet and call.
It's just, yeah, I, I, I'd assume it three bets more than calls, but it's pretty close.
Um, I'm betting actually.
For sure.
Just small, real small.
Yeah. Bet orange.
Orange.
Bet orange.
Um, I don't know how we're gonna go small on this board.
Yeah, I would have went big, cause I want
Nice, got completed that.
I want to fold.
I could see big, either way.
I want, I just want to take it down and he, he was under the gun, so he's probably not gonna hit that, um, if I'm, well, I raised, so I gotta, I'm thinking, I wanna bet big.
I would say we have zero, I would say we have zero big bets.
I'm with ten here. I think, I want, uh, this like low, you want to polarize, but complete the equity overrules everything, no?
But I mean, big, big guys, like half pot is what I would do.
He's got all the, he's got more sets than us too.
I would do all. Uh.
Dude, if you just call pre, I don't think it does have more sets than you. Yeah, my big bet would have been half pot.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll have more sets and, uh.
We have more sets and and straights. Usually when you have completed the equity here, you could just have the straight, so we don't use big sets.
Change the, uh, four to a do so you can complete the thought, show them the counter argument.
So, yeah, it has to be.
That's still completed equity.
There's no completed equity.
Three, four suited.
You're telling me you don't flat three four?
Okay, well, I guess, I guess Nick is kind of right, I mean, if you really wanted a good example, you'd have to put like a jack. No one has, it's a three, it's a three bet pot, no one's got, uh.
Yeah, you're flattered.
You're probably right, there's no three, four in range.
No, no one has it either way, even in the flating range, I was kind of being facetious.
But yeah, it did, okay.
Still small bets.
My thinking would be to put pressure on him, because of the fact that I'm, you know what I mean, I don't want, I have a queen, jack.
Yeah.
So my, so my, my desires would be to fold and, cause I'm, like what you have talked to, like I don't want to, yeah, okay, it should be a small bet to test it, but really I just want to take you down and fold. Cause I want to put pressure on, if he has a king, queen, king, jack, if I bet big, it still makes it tough because he's still scared.
Overpair still one, he's got sets.
But what I'm saying is we're gonna find out right now.
He's gonna, I kind of, uh, I kind of like where Juan's going with this, because it's one of these things.
Call me on a little bit.
You have, uh, you have trash hand, right? You don't have anything.
And he's out of position.
You know, um, you benefit more from fold equity, so I, I understand where you're coming from with that, like one big bet and then shut it down.
Exactly.
The downside to that is from, uh, defensive position for him, whenever you bet big, his uh, how he defends is gonna make sense, he's not gonna have to stretch too wide. But when you bet small, he's gonna have to defend with these unintuitive hands that he really doesn't want to call with. So when you bet small, they're just gonna overfold most of the time, but when you bet big, they kind of meet MDF.
Also, I think GTO is fifty fifty for button, fifty percent check, fifty percent bet small.
I think if it was a later, little later position, probably cutoff hijack, I'd do that, but because he, you know what I mean?
Your face?
You know, and that's just me, yeah.
Next point is, your next point is you're forcing him to make more mistakes, uh, with a small bet, people are gonna under, under defend.
Yep.
But we got nothing, that was what I'm saying, you know what I mean?
Here's what you do, you bet small on the flop, you get called by ace high, and then you big bet the turn and you got extra value.
It comes, okay, let me ask you a question, if it comes queen. Then, and he's got a bet, what do you do? But if you bet big. Players that were played, most likely you're gonna fold on a big bet, because they don't want to defend out of a position when you three bet him.
Okay, let's put it like this, when, when, when you, when you bet small, what do you think you're supposed to with jack ten of hearts?
What's that?
When you bet small, what do you think they're supposed to do with jack ten of hearts?
They're supposed to defend.
When you bet big, what are they supposed to with jack ten of hearts?
Hmm, probably, well, what they're supposed to, I honestly, me, I, if it's big, I mean, I just fold, I mean, with the board.
Yeah, exactly, so, but I think when you bet big, people are gonna fold jack ten of hearts, but when you bet small, they're also gonna fold jack ten of hearts in general, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in general, but I'm saying, I'm trying to get a better hand as far as like, let's say, because he has a queen, a, a, a better queen, ace, you know what I mean, let's say it was
Okay, well, thank you, king ten of hearts then.
You know, I just want to.
King, queen might still fold to a small, but if he has ace queen, I mean I don't know if you're getting him off it for a
Yeah, you're not getting ace queen to fold either way.
You don't really want jack, you don't want jack ten to fold, do you?
No.
Well, you don't want to Like, say king ten of hearts, then it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, king ten.
Just kept with an example. King ten of hearts, yeah, whatever.
So what the hell are we doing on a?
We're gonna barrel, I think.
Bet small and you called, right?
I don't know, does it, doesn't, when the, if five comes, can, does it mean I have more fives?
Well, we got a spade, queen of spade would be better, but
The spade is
If you bet small. Go ahead, man.
I think you gotta continue, just because it's, I mean, I don't think that's a scare card.
I'm kind of with Danny in the chat, bet big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm betting big because I have a spade here, I would give up without the spade, but we just block, uh, his flush draws. And we don't block hearts or diamonds here.
And we're still uncapped.
And I also think by betting small, you induce a lot more chances of them raising you right there to see where you're at versus big, if they do, they're probably just gonna flatter fold.
My, my thinking is on this turn, when you just want to like play like you would with queens or jacks, so you probably bet big. It's not a three bet pot.
I'm betting big.
Yeah, yeah, wait, I thought we were free betting pre. Not a three bet. I thought we'd side, okay. No, we didn't, we didn't.
Even if it's not a three bet pot, I still kind of like, I mean, this is, this is more condensed around your flating range than it is his opening range.
I'm betting fifty-five or eighty-three percent here always.
Yeah, I don't understand what we're doing, what's the logic behind betting big again?
Okay, so I walk yourself through what his defends are when you bet small on the flop. He's gonna have like strong, jacks and hearts, strong ace X.
Nine, ten of diamonds.
Ace, king, all of these kind of things, he's gonna defend his back doors, you have queen high, you have like, you have nothing. You have an offsuit queen high, so like
High part of the deck, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Your best barrels that aren't direct draws are gonna be spade club.
Right, yeah, 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 for sure, I agree with Nick, so it's like, this is one of those combos where um, if I didn't have flush interaction in the back door, I would just give up. But you have to find some double barrels, you get plenty of better cards to fold or better hands to fold. That are gonna be sticky versus small bet on the flop, the range is, like I said, more, or the flop's more condensed around your range, I think it's a good bet.
Alright, sorry, I had to get off of mobile so I could, uh, jump in here. This whole hand has just been a huge polarization error, we should be betting, we should be betting something like value and bluffs. This is not much of a value and it's not much of a bluff, like why are we not, like Yeah, but we have like, we have seven X, we have eight X, we have three X.
But we don't want to get check raised off that stuff, I mean, we're deep, but.
Some mix in it, but like, starting on the flop. I want hands that will make strong hands sometimes by river, and the only way to make a strong hand with this by river is to go runner and a queen.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Well, we can certainly check flop, we can, but now that
If we had ten nine, right? This is such a nice bet on, on flop, because then we are, we do at least have theoretical potential of the nut straight, if it runs out our way, right?
Yeah, I kind of agree with what Danny's saying though, it's like you have two options, right? You don't have to bet this, but if you do open that betting dialogue. And you pick up any kind of bluff equity, um, I, I don't think you're just firing one bullet with this hand.
It's mostly betting flop, like
And it did mostly bet flop, yeah, so it's not like it's a punt, it's like a thing. Heavyweight.
So what do we do on a five?
Maybe we do have to be careful about which hands we polarize with here now that
Bet. To get king eyes and a size to
I'm shooting my way out. I'm going
We have an SPR of, we have an SPR of seven still, there's so much money behind, shoot your way out.
So far, at least on the turn, I'm gonna keep firing, we'll see.
I think it's mostly eighty-three and some fifty-five, yeah, okay.
Shoot your way out, boys.
It's just one of our best combos. Yeah, I'm probably planning to give up most rivers actually.
Yeah, the, honestly Roger, that's an improvement, man, it's better than like the twenty seconds per hand.
And it's like just because this combo, right?
Uh, yeah, look, look, look at the, look at the range, it's definitely centralized around the spade.
Single spade, yeah.
So like you would be giving up otherwise.
Okay, but I would like to defend one thing, you see that frequency jump up sharply with like high-low seven X, high-low eight X.
Oh yeah, I mean, those are like the nuts.
Stone cold bluffs, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from what you're saying, those are like, those are the premium bluffs, this is like, eh, you know, it's like, okay. Not gonna win by check.
Well, from what it's worth, every combo is still barrowing some weight.
Yeah, that's. Queen jack can still, like, he'll have sevens, eights, nines, tens, like, we can, we have clean outs still. So, uh, go back to the.
Is a pretty good indication of what we're polarizing around, we're checking a lot of ace, queen, ace, jack, king, queen, king, jack, and that tells me that we, those are blocking his folds.
So, yeah, you can look at his call range here and articulate pretty well what you're targeting. He's got big ace X, he's got king, queen, he's got king, jack, he's got small pairs. He's got like some ten, eight and stuff like that in here, nine, ten. Um, like, when the five comes, how much of this really improves?
So you can see we're folding a lot of the offsuit, the king, queen, king, jack, king, ten, ace, ten, they're all ahead of us, right?
Well, that's.
Pretty good.
Yeah, the offsuits, you know, they're not continuing because they're, they're gonna need some kind of backdoor equity to kinda support their, their high cards. That's why you don't really see any continues there.
Yeah, that's a lot of faults, right?
But you know, like, you gotta bring some heat if you're gonna get ace, jack to fold on this turn that doesn't have a spade, right? Ace, queen. Because he only checked called flop, I think we can kinda just go ham. Like, a lot of our range was just going ham.
And if you're gonna bet, you're gonna bet big, bigger check, so.
It's hard for him to defend.
Shoot your way out, get king eyes to fold, get some ace highs to fold. And be happy.
On the turn, I have to give up river, obviously, but.
Yeah, I think I'm getting up river.
Oh, maybe you don't give up, maybe you don't.
Is this a single race pot?
It is.
I'm done.
Give up on this one, don't we? I don't know, man.
I'm not changing my.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just giving up.
We're getting snapped by pocket eights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe you do give up, but I think you might blast sometimes.
Uh, what, what about this combo makes you wanna blast?
It's not about this combo, it's about the runout, he hasn't improved.
Because it's so hard for us to hit the board, that like, yeah, like, uh, Nick just said, like, pocket eights is just feeling pretty comfortable, that we just don't have a boat or better very often.
We hit the board.
It's the same reason like out of position can actually donk when the ace pairs, and they can donk with like a variety of hands.
Play that, it would be an easy bluff, right?
Uh, you would have to triple off with a spade, I think. Not, not a double paired spade, though, I think if you're talking like the, like deuce of spades, maybe the three of spades.
So a spade is like a green light to fire.
Yeah, not.
Unless it's the ace of spades, like the ace of spades, I ain't, I ain't loving.
Seven, you probably barrel non-spade, three, you probably barrel non-spade. Six, you probably barrel, maybe.
Well, if you're gonna barrel a six, why would you not barrel a four?
That's kinda, I'm kind of, I'm kind of in that same boat, Louis, to be quite honest, like, that's, that's why, that's why I'm kinda like torn about the four. Well, do we have six X in our turn range? I don't think we have four X in our turn range.
Thing is, he's calling.
Right, so a six would make more sense to.
The king eyes, I folded the term and the I, ace eyes that are left are not gonna fold on a double pair.
I don't know, they might. Thinking an ace high spades would make actually a decent hero call down here.
Yeah, like, eight, eight, seven of spades is a not a hero call on this river, like. Well, I mean, in, not the spades, obviously, cause you want to.
Just click the green button, Christ. Yeah, I was right, when you bet, you bet huge. Not all in, though, uh, it's, yeah, not. I did say all in, I mean, one fifty.
Look at the spades, the runouts, let's see what we're.
I am kinda curious about the six, if you were to put a six, a three, or a seven out there.
I still would have did it on a four, honestly.
Yeah, so like, there is quite a bit of big betting going on here.
Okay, so you wanna bet when you don't have a spade in your hand?
When the spades don't come in, it's interesting.
You, you're doing some betting with spades.
Yeah.
To be honest, it's, it's pretty heavily just mixed, I don't know what the heuristic would be, I don't think it really matters too much when it double pairs. But you're, uh, you're turning worse into bluffs, like, look at nine, seven, nine, eight. Ten, seven, pocket twos. I think you're just kind of blocking some of the folds when you have a queen and a jack, so it becomes less desirable.
Or some spades on the river.
There's quite a lot of all in, just saying.
Oh, wait, but that's a triple, that's again double paired, I would kinda like to see it on like a bricky spade, like ten of spades or something.
Yeah, I still wanted to see the four, cause I would have barreled the four, I wouldn't have cared.
I think ten's pretty much like the most neutral card.
Yeah, okay, now look at what you're doing, that makes a lot more sense.
Now let's play spade blockers, go for it.
Okay, well, we figured out if it's a spade, we'd probably go for it, right?
But put an ace of spade, cause I would give up on an ace of spade, cause I just think Doug is still have too many aces in range.
Go bigger, Ken.
I think ace spade is a good card for.
You started.
Exactly, he has no flushes, he has like a couple king X combos, that's it.
So he uses the jack and not the queen for some reason, I don't know why.
What does it do on a six, Louis? It doesn't matter what color, I don't think. Yeah, okay.
Six spades. Buy the same as the four, right?
Yeah, I think so, I don't think it's gonna make a huge difference. Six of spades is out there.
Oh, yeah, never mind, can't have it.
Four spade, the older one?
Yeah, we looked at that.
What about a seven?
Eight, yeah, seven, eight. It makes straight.
Can you do an offsuit? Offsuit seven's kind of interesting. Not for queen jack, but just. There you go, there you go.
I'd struggle to find that. I wouldn't find it, honestly, I'm just looking, I was looking for a spade in my mind.
I think. You have way more eight X in your raise than, than the.
I would be, uh, finding this for the same reason I would incorrectly probably fire the four sometimes.
I think four liners are weird, cause there's no way to actually block the straight, really, so like, you either have it or you don't.
Well, it's interesting, cause it's a paired four liner too, so like.
Do you wanna tree bet a little bit here?
I think it's too wide.
Ten percent, fifteen percent, maybe, or call, I mean, I will call, but it might have some sliver.
I like, uh, I like, yeah, I was gonna say, I like calling a little bit more because you have the button.
Ten versus U T G is a bad card, right?
Nice, yeah.
I think two, two, though, cause he's opening off suit tens, so.
It's just, it's just monotone, I'm gonna throw a small bet, I don't even care.
I'm checking.
You can exploit that against a lot of people, but not really here, mostly just checking. We're both gonna just play really cautiously, on other flops, we can pretty much.
Do we raise now?
I'll fold, yeah.
Nah, raise a bluff with some.
Yes, the five felt good, but.
Uh, thirty big blinds versus hijack, I think you can, you can raise this some.
This is. I think you can fold as well.
He's opening ten, so I usually will raise tens or nines.
I'm kinda with Juan here, man, like, click the raises, what I would be doing.
Still a raise, yeah.
We're gonna grow bananas.
Uh, you see, you say, you say small, but he. King, he shouldn't have ace king, I don't know if you go small here.
Oh, we might blast. I'm checking.
Yeah, I'm going small and then I could.
So think through it real quick, think through it real quick, alright, he doesn't have ace king, you're blocking ace king. And there is locked up equity, but you're blocking the bottom end straight and you're. You're blocking king nine, you're blocking eight, nine, which you could have both of here, um, SPR is kind of weird. I wanna triple barrel, uh, so I wanna bet ten percent.
You can't keep it up to triple.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Danny, I don't know. You don't really, I mean. If you bet ten, sure. Okay, so like, at the end of the day, we don't want him to continue with his entire continuing range, so I think ten is a little counterproductive.
Well, I mean, if, if you want a triple barrel, then ten effective, because you get him folded at a later point in the hand.
I am torn, I'm going like B twenty-five or like, I wouldn't be surprised to see something absolutely silly like.
Yeah, that's what I'm going.
Like a middle size, like jam or something. You probably, you just call, I don't think you. Fold for sure.
I mean, we have ace king, he doesn't, he's just like.
Danny, you wanna eat those words? You guys are tripping, I will bet so much money, it's a fold.
Wait, ace nine.
It's a fold, it has to be a fold. But he, he walked back to his convictions, I respected Danny, you walked it back a little bit, but you stood strong.
I went a little to the middle of the scale for a second, then I went right back toward the edge.
We're ahead of his king X that are doing this too.
Alright, so do an M D F calc, just do a simple M D F calc here, alright, so you need twenty to win sixty-ish. So thirty-two percent, so if we assume a king's good, and eight's good.
That's four times.
And an ace is probably good.
We could be good right now, too, by the way.
We could be ahead right now, he could be doing this with. King eight.
Uh, we got the prize.
If you're using, uh, chip E V mode, this might, might be a bet, but if, if you're using I C M mode.
Oh, yeah, it's a no-brainer, Gary, at that point, right? I'm gonna say. Hey, already do one thing, Louis, hey, will you make it a, will you look at a suited ace nine then?
Professional punters here.
We're gonna, we're gonna just flat pre mainly.
That's why I wanted to check flop, though, so that didn't happen.
Easy to say that everyone's so call-y when it's, when it's fake money on G T O wizard, I wanna watch all the games, I wanna watch you call. No one's calling this in game, none of you are calling, it's not a single one of you.
Nope.
You're right, um, you're right.
Apparently, you're investing your money blindly.
But look at, look at how we're like, it's actually not that bad, I mean, it loses point two chips, it's like, I've seen crazier calls, right? We've all made bigger mistakes.
It's true, it's true.
That was the bluff that we identified.
If a straight card comes, it's over.
I was watching, uh, ape styles at the final table bubble of the venom last night.
Did you see that hand? That was so.
Yeah, he sniped that guy off with, uh. Yeah, he snapped him off with a pair of fours on like, uh, it was a three liner with a double flush draw, and the guy ended up jamming a flush draw on a gut shot with two overs or something on the turn. It's pretty, it was a pretty sick call, to be honest, he didn't even really think about it either, he just snapped it off.
And he said what he had, he goes, ah, fuck it, if he has a flush, he has a flush, no, he said if he was going on the turn, he goes, if he's going for a flush, he's going for a flush. He goes, but I don't think he would have snapped him, fricking, everybody went crazy. That was a sick hand.
Uh, we're gonna call one here.
Yeah, it was.
Tiny bet. We have spade, yep.
Anyone seen, uh, Justin Saliba yesterday?
Yeah, he got third place in some tournament.
Yeah, and.
That was a stacked table, too, a lot of people there. You can see the final table the day before that, that was sick. Yeah, they could go back and forth. Rehanded. Or value bet.
I think it's too thin. Don't really wanna reopen the action. Alright, uh, this is a call, this hand does not perform well, is it three bet versus that position?
Stage four, right?
I don't even think, I, I just don't think the will aces do much. You might start jamming them versus later position, I think.
Oh, we're only twenty-five, I thought we were deeper, nevermind.
I would agree with you, Ken, if you were deeper, I would be three betting these more.
Okay, and what do you do with ace deuce?
Uh, you still call, I think, you have the button, man.
It's a fold, like our.
Maybe, you might be right.
It's mixing folds.
Yeah.
Jams.
Still jams.
Still jams, so if it's later position, it's definitely a jam. At some point, too, cause I'm curious.
I think jam is pretty good when. I know, it's.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, this is it, um, this is it. So this one is against a low jack, this one is against under the gun.
I'm away from my computer making coffee.
So when it's, uh, when it's mixing like that and you have, you know, fairly short stack, and there's, there's zero benefit of calling there, isn't there? I mean.
Zero benefit of calling, why would you say that?
What, I, I was looking at the other chart, Louis. Gets under the gun.
I would actually argue the opposite, like, because. If it's mixing, yeah, that does mean zero E V.
If it's mixing and then you're not extremely confident about how you play both flop, probably better off to avoid.
Okay, yeah, I'm a newbie, you guys, so that's good advice, Louis, thanks.
Not zero E V, but there's no E V difference between the two actions.
The other action is folding, like, if it's raising or calling, then it's plus E V, but if it's mixing between calling and folding, then it should be zero.
Okay.
Sure. Yep.
Thanks, you guys.
I would fold, I don't have the heart.
Yeah.
The, the, the physical heart, not the card.
You're a poker player.
Versus under the gun one, I don't like three betting this as much, and I think calling is actually probably pretty close. I would still.
Eighty percent fold, twenty percent three bet.
Yeah.
I arrived just in time to save you guys.
Thank you, Charlie.
Uh, I'm definitely calling here.
I'm calling one time just to try to hit a set. So deep.
Think we fold.
I'm over, over folding versus ace, ace high boards, I do agree with what you say typically, Juan, but, um.
We have no way to improve unless we hit a four. Uh, it doesn't fold.
I don't think I'm folding any pairs, really, uh, two's, uh, probably two's, but yeah, on something. On a small bet, I'm gonna call just to try to fill one time.
In general, against, whatever it's an ace I board or king I board, and you're against E P, you overfold.
But the only, see how he showed his hand, but this is the. But the only, see how you showed his hand, but this is the thing.
Oh, you should have played it.
See, this is what I was gonna say Louis, but, because this is true, this is how I've been starting, but I've been trying to, trying to do it to where like, as far as like desires and stuff, and I could be wrong, but my hope, my hold exactly is why I'm peeling there, because his natural thing is what is he gonna do? He's gonna bet. So I bet, he bets small, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call once, what's, if he has nothing, most of the players were playing with their checking, they're giving up turn, now I'm gonna, now I'm gonna bet, and they're just folding. Yeah, but I think.
When they have a range bet on four.
And then you could still, and then you could still hit your set still, or you could be, and you were ahead.
Yeah, I, I do like that thinking.
That's just what I'm, I'm trying to, and honestly, it's really helped me because of that, because I'm not just knowing exactly what it's saying.
It's the school of beef is, is what you're preaching there, Juan.
No, I'm not trying to change it, I'm just saying, cause now I'm.
No, 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 I know, I, I'm not saying it's bad at all, I'm not saying it's bad at all, I'm just saying that's that school of thought, it's an exploitative school of thought to deviate against weaker opponents, which is, there's nothing wrong with it, it's good. In practice immensely.
If you've got like, some people that don't, and they don't bet turn enough, like if you're using a hood, then they're like, it's easy to make.
The other one there is if their small bet range is really weak, and their big bet range is too strong, then like you can very properly explode and call against their small bets.
Yes.
Because like, it is just air a lot, and then if they do check, it's like, it's a green light, you just take the pot away. But like, it's important to realize that that is exploitative, cause like a strong player should bet small with some strong hands, they should also check with just like some easy cooldowns, and they're just gonna like snap you off like ace five or whatever, and just say, call, call, like I have top pair, I'm not folding.
For sure, that's me, like, that board you should check so often with good hands.
Yep.
Right, but there's something you guys are disregarding is the fact that the set value can be bad, can be reverse implied out.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Like you peel with.
Uh, I'm not worrying about reverse implied odds from a set at, at forty bigs, like.
When you, when you call, when you float in flop, when you're floating flop, you, you're not like, floating, just take your set the way you're like, you're floating against this weak, weak range that you're gonna take it off in my turn.
If he bets again small, then I could just give him.
Yeah, we just fold.
I got, he's at, he's, he, you know what I mean, I, it's too big.
We're not looking at stacking off with a set either, like, we can just call down with three at a set.
I am, I'm looking at stack.
Yeah, I am, I'm saying, but we, if you're saying about the ver- verse implied, we don't have to stack off with a set, when we're in position, we can just call, if he bets. We don't have to bet, you're like, just, it's just. We get like.
Or goes check, 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 you still take it down, and now you just didn't give up, you know?
I think so. I think, I think one of the things you guys should take a look at, and you can go back and look at this hand Louis, um, is on an ace nine X board, you're gonna see just a lot of small bets from.
Yeah, just his range bet in it from.
Players' position, he's not range betting.
No, no.
No, it's not a range bet at all. He checks lots of traps.
Checking a lot. Uh, okay.
Twenty-five percent checked.
So, so look, that's basically a range bet then, no?
Yep, pretty much.
But it's betting small, like you notice there's no big bets in there.
Yeah, yeah, hundred percent.
Right, so like, he's just kind of value owning us when he has a six, a nine, or an ace here, a lot. Right, and that's a big part of his range construction, when we take a look at how often he's hit a pair on this board.
But it does, so, okay, I agree, I'd.
And I've actually, I've actually seen it exploit against a certain type of player, like, this is less here, cause he should have some checks out of position, but in position, if they ever miss, um, bets, they're often like, if this is, you know, cutoff versus big blind, and he checks this flop, he usually doesn't have air there, he actually like has pocket kings or a showdown specifically. He just has like weak showdown that he's like not interested in building a pot with, it's a bit of a nitty move, but like if you start like, if you start bailing air against an opponent who only checks back kings and ace deuce here, like, you're just torching.
I think there's one thing, when you said you don't have to barrel off with the.
That's what I was saying, you don't have to barrel on the turn.
I think you do have to barrel off, when you hit, if you hit your, i- if you hit your set, because you won't hit, because you hit your set so rarely.
Yeah, no, you can barrel off, but I don't mean you have, I mean, you don't have to lose a full stack with the set.
You do, you really do though.
I think you do have to lose a full stack there, because if you don't lose a full stack there, then you don't win.
You're losing value, yeah, yeah.
Win a full stack there, you don't have the odds to.
Yeah, yeah.
The set mine in the first place, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I do agree with that.
We're not, we're not just calling to hit a four.
Yeah, but yeah, we're not calling just at the set, that's the point, yeah. And we'll, even, say if he does have a six, if he has a six or a nine, we get, we can get him to fold them by river if he just checks, if he don't trip, if he's not tripling off himself.
Can we look at that too, like? If he bets flop, we call and he checks the turn.
I'm raising.
Can we look at a few turns and see if we're supposed to bluff pocket fours? Cause I would just check it back and try to get to showdown personally.
Yeah, and you don't really wanna bluff it.
I mean, depending on the runout, I guess, like, if it's a safe turn, I'll check back, if it's a crappy turn and he checks, I might try to start going for something.
I don't think you get to bet your, your pair, because you're just trying to hit the set or reach showdown. Actually, no.
That's what I would think.
Yeah. If he had a chance of a straight, it's probably different, right?
Right. Uh, Andy, we're just doing a lot of different button spots, different depths and, uh, against.
Button range construction.
Oh, we raised this one.
Not really, six, twenty-five. I'm not too much into raising her.
Yeah.
We jam or fold, we don't have three bets.
Yeah, the bottom of our opponent's range is gonna be suited sixes, so we're gonna target slightly worse stuff, ace five, ace deuce.
At fifty percent ICM, I bet we raise here. Good amount.
Yeah. Any ICM, this becomes pretty good. Maybe not though, maybe more like ace five, ace four.
I think more of ace five, ace four, but this will still be in there a little, maybe some mainly calling.
A little bet here, nine, nine, eight? We call a lot of nine X, eight X.
I'm actually, yeah, betting small, you get, I mean, one, you gotta bet the one, right? I'll probably bet in thirty-three.
Doesn't nine high favor the cutoff?
Uh, not really. We, when we call, we're dense, around nines and eights.
They open off suit nine.
Yeah, but we are calling a lot more than they open it.
Yeah.
Alright.
We got two rolls, king eight you call, right? Or you, you three bet, queen eight, jack eight, you're supposed to play all the suited eights, all the suited nines.
Yeah, but they have offsuit nines and we don't.
What I mean.
But it's not nine high, it's trip nine, so it's different.
We got ace nine off.
But they also have a lot more junk in their range too.
And we're more good hands, so I'm.
Just a, it's just a pruning depth.
Well, let's have a quick look at the thing they put the graph, you know?
If, if, if it was like, um, nine, six, five, or like nine.
Look at the button, man, the button is rocking all the way. Cause we're condensed. Yeah, yeah, it's off two nines, but in proportion, we have more nines.
Yeah, it's, it's just, he has a lot more junk in his range here.
No, Louis, we don't have more nines, he has more nines. Oh, in proportion to all of his range?
Yeah, people, if you look at ratios, we have a bigger ratio of nine in our range.
Yeah.
And when we talk about.
Definitely have more eights, and we definitely.
We show up with a nine more often than it. Or any good.
We, we often talk about that wrong, we look at, we look at the raw number, because it's easier to think of, but the real thing that matters is the ratio, not the number.
Yeah.
But now, if he calls here, he's gonna have, he's gonna fold a lot of trash, we're still in here with all our trash, and now the ratio is gonna change significantly.
So we showdown, right? Right?
Yeah, it's make it a showdown value, I will have a raise.
Okay. Hmm, kinda wanna bluff now.
Chop with ace seven and worse, lose the ace and better.
Can we make ace jack fold?
No.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Just beat king A, right?
Okay.
We just fold here? Here, never three bet?
Fold.
And then what about queen jack off?
Yeah, fold.
Well.
Is there any calling?
No, zero percent call. But with jack, maybe.
There might be, there might be costs of it at the bottom of the range here, but like, uh, just fold against under the gun.
So make it king jack off then, what are you supposed to do with king jack?
Raise and raise some folds. I'm actually raising, uh, ace ten, eh, all that stuff too.
Yeah, ace ten seems to be a good three bet, king jack, queen jack, three bet, right?
Yeah.
Ace jack.
King queen off, I'm just, king queen, I'm just flatty.
Okay, let's have a quick look. Ace ten, king jack, queen jack. And the king ten is just a fold. Right?
If I was wrong, king jack mixes calls and.
Yeah.
Calls and raises, not folds and raises.
It does have a few folds in there too, so if you're folding it, it's not a big mistake.
Yeah. I mean, I could be, although, the way I've been, helping me, what I've been doing is like, let's say they're opening under the gun a jack, automatically in my head, I'm going, okay, the only way I can have a jack if it's, you know, ace jack, ace ten, you know what I mean, or something like that, and then anything above, if I wanna call, it has to be higher than that jack, so it'd have to be queen keen is be the lowest offsuit basically. Right. You know? Yeah. That's been helping me a little bit.
I would put it in here.
Yep.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
That's the third.
It's a perfect size.
Oh.
Oh, stupid run out.
And we bust it.
Call. All the ambulance.
All the ambulance, but not for me. Just a call here, or a three bet some?
We call them.
Little too low to three bet, sevens, three bet.
Yeah, I'm probably three betting, yeah, six, six is probably two, I might even three bet six.
I wish we had sevens. Old.
Yeah, easy fold, right?
Fold.
Anyone calling?
If it was like a two.
Someone's getting bitten. Ah, jack ten off here, sounds like it's probably could get frisky a little bit. Now?
Yes.
I never know what to do in these spots.
You just three bet, no?
Undercard, uh, I get the card up and raise.
Oh, it's everything, that's why I don't know, cause you can do everything.
That's three bet this.
I'm kind of a nit, I usually lean toward folding here, but I guess it's kind of.
I don't hate that.
Maybe I'm missing some spots though, you know?
Oh boy.
Ten percent.
Easy.
Yeah.
On the jack ten, the deeper you are, the more it's a fold, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
Right, that's why.
Well, it's LP versus LP, so the deeper, if you're a hundred, like you fold, but at forty or fifty, you're still three betting plenty.
I'll, I'll go twenty-five percent.
You double barrel here?
Yeah.
I don't think it's good. And kids, I give up, you have to draw that struggle against a raise, right?
You ever draw that even if it gets there?
I think, I think these spots are weird though, cause like, we, we do need some bluffs, cause like obviously, you know, any spade is, any spade is value. So like, what do you pick? I don't know.
Not this, cause this could not, well, maybe this.
Yeah.
I don't think this has showdown though, like.
What would you bluff then Louis? What, what you, what's your bluff there? My bluffs? Yeah. Honestly, I would, I wouldn't bet so small on the flop, I would size up a little bit.
Jack, jack nine of hearts.
And then, not, non-equity ones, like my worst ones, like whatever, my worst, like, if I show up with six, six, five of hearts here, that would be great, I think.
So there's, there's kind of two ideas here, the, our opponents, when they're defending against our bets, are defending with either pairs or s- a spade in their hand or spades. Right, so, we are still, our hand still has equity against pairs, with either making the ace or the nine, and so that's why we still bet this one. Um, cause we're in the spot where we can still beat parts of our opponent's range, and we still get our opponents to fold better hands here when we bet. Cause the jack ten has the straight equity.
Alright. Now, 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 now.
Show's over.
Give up.
Uh, I don't know, me.
He has like, like pocket sixes with a spade or something stupid.
Yeah, yeah.
Check the turn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm over it.
He checks the turn, and then he rechecks the river.
There's no straight on the board at all, so it's not interesting to block anything, so again, it's one of the spots where like, high spades are value, everything else is kind of whatever.
I mean, alright, just go all in if you want, I don't know.
What? Ooh.
Nah, too much. After checking turn, I feel like, we're gonna have some like more medium to big sizes here, like fifty-nine, eighty-two, maybe, I don't know, this is ridiculous.
Pretty sure we.
I'm never using these two sizes, I'm either jamming or giving up.
Yeah, I think it's.
Like, you could check, you could check the turn with some kind of stuff that's turned into thin value, like if you check the turn with ten of spades, can you bet your ten of spades for value now? Do you wanna go all in with it?
So Tim, you said one of these two sizings, why?
Yeah. Cause, cause we, we took a depolarizing action on turns, like, how do we depolarize and then hyperpolarize again? It's kind of weird, you know, we checked in position. So like, we, we have a lot of like, medium strength hands that maybe weren't sure they're good, but after he checks again, we're like, aha, I think my, I think my ten of spades is good.
Ace ten with the ten of spades.
Yeah, or something, you could check my hypothesis, see if we are betting hands like that, like, sort of, ten, nine, it feels like the region we're in. Of spades.
Yeah, let's see our strategy here, do we have any jam component?
We could check back an ace of spades as a, as a trap sometimes, I don't hate that, cause like, you know, it's not gonna, it's not really gonna get, uh, drawn out on very much, yes, have like, a boat draw.
Yeah, but I mean, by the same token, Tim, we depolarize, but he also has, by checking river, he has said that he has some kind of marginal made hand.
Yes.
Most likely, where we're, if we wanna try to bluff, we need to use enough of a sizing to get him off it, right?
So Louis, look over at like queen ten off, queen jack off, I feel like we're gonna see some, yeah, yeah, so we can bet the size with like ten of spades. We can go like fifty-nine.
Eight of spades.
Okay, yeah.
Do we have bluffs?
Yeah, you were looking at ace six of hearts, that's a bluff.
Yeah, pocket jacks? Oh, that's spades.
Spades.
Do we bet?
The jack is, jack goes bigger a little bit.
I could go a little smaller. I could nine with no spade.
Bush. We bet the set.
It's just like, well, I'm no good, I guess.
That, the set, yeah, set was nice, dude.
Wait, that, is that thin value? The set, it is, right? Check.
It has to be, right? It has to have a, like a worst hand calling.
Yeah, you just get called by a queen or what? I think.
The EV of checking is so much higher. But it was still mixing.
So he has to call some of the parents.
Could we look at our turn strategy as well? See what kind of stuff we're like following up the flop bet with? So mainly betting still. For another small size. Jack nine suited is in there. Hmm. Okay.
Hmm. You gotta see that, right?
Uh huh.
We never get here with a small spade, right? Because we just don't have. Any. Hands with small. Or do we get here like, like with our pet, with our pairs? Do we get here with a five of spades, a six of spades? Do we ever bet that?
No.
Okay.
But the eight of spades was betting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Hey guys, my daughter has a, a golf tryout, but I really enjoyed it. I wanted to get here for a little bit. Have to take it too, but I appreciate our best. I had a good time. I'll be back in here though, definitely guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Great.
Always a pleasure.
I thought he'd never leave.
Those bet check, bet check, bet bluff spots are um. They're fun.
I heard that, but thanks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you better hope wine's gone.
But, but at least I know how you feel, appreciate it.
I think he did it on purpose.
Yeah, he's scrolling with you, man.
Who, I thought it never.
That's still on the recording LP.
He was here, he's never gonna listen to it. Want to bet small?
No.
Do you wanna do? Check.
I want to check and lose.
No.
Or get lucky on the turn. I want to check and lose.
Why not bet? Because we don't have equity. So if we had arts, like we can see the turn. But this one is just like nothing, right? It's a queen eye board.
Yep.
Not so good for him.
He's got a tight.
I'm down for, I'm down for that.
And you're, we're doing zero equity bluff into a tight range.
Oh. Zero equity bluffing into a tight range. My, my sage words here, might be sage words.
Sometimes, sometimes you just go back to. You ch- you check your marginal made hands and your junk, your premium maids and your draws. Describe this as a draw.
We do block auto folds.
Lamb. Sometimes it's simple, right?
Yeah.
I wish I knew when it's supposed to be simple. This is, feels pretty bad, I guess.
Yeah, but now, now we do some, now we do some things going, you're not happy.
We have some flush draws to check back, so.
That's a trying at her angle. But.
Yeah.
Bluffed with the best hand.
Oh, okay, so we can. If it was cut off, we could three bet. Against him, we call or fold?
Uh, this is.
No, against under the gun, we used suited sevens, right?
Yeah. Like we can three bet or fold here, like this is probably gonna be bottom of range.
With our call, okay.
Suited sevens.
Yeah.
Louis, against cutoff, I would pure flat this, I think.
No, it's very heavy.
King, six, king five, king four.
Oh, come on.
If, if he's opening suited sixes, you're gonna want to be with king five and king four.
King seven, the nuts.
Okay. It's all of them. Eight, seven, six, five, four.
What about eight, four?
Oh no, what? We lost our, we lost the end.
Oh, well.
Oh no, there it is, king seven.
We're not folding.
Come on Scotty, are you gonna call here?
At least, I'm calling a raising, I'm never folding here.
Fucking.
I'm, but I don't think, I think I need a spade to, I think I need a spade to raise, so.
I was gonna say the same thing, we're pretty deep to like, the value of backdoor draws is, is higher.
What if he bets the normal sign?
Then you can.
This isn't.
But one point four is so small, we're gonna call.
But Scotty, I think, yeah, we're exactly, we're allowed to.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing? Because he can take this line with Queen Jack, and we have like, we're pretty live against Queen Jack, he can take this line with. Yeah. Pocket eight, with a spade sometime, I mean, not all the time, but sometimes.
Jack.
I don't, I don't know, man. Because I've given a right. Paul grease up to, to check when the. When the.
No, but.
This is ace, queen ten with two flush draws we don't have against under the gun, like, he's just gonna continue against any size you play. Flush completing, then it's good to have clubs, right? That eighty-three percent pot, and watch him continue with eighty-three percent of range. This is not folding. Yay.
We could have done a little something.
Yeah, you could have just, you could have just dropped it in one twenty-five, just a little, little casual.
We need to be really, really convincing, because it's under event, right?
Yeah, exactly, we're not trying to make him fold like. To fold like Queen high, King high, like in some spots, like we're trying to get him to fold like Queen Jack.
On the river.
That's the kind of hand I'm looking at. We're done with this hand. Say goodbye.
Yeah, well.
Oh my god, oh my god.
Too hasty here to give up.
Oh my god, I hate my life, why do I play this game?
Front door flush came in and he checks again. I mean.
He's checking too often for an ace queen ten board. And we'll have a king in hand, so we block his.
He can just have like, like ace three of clubs, right? Ace three of clubs is just gonna station off and be like, I call.
Think ace three has to bet one street, no?
He did.
Just a pocket jacks.
He did bet one street.
Holy moly, my god.
Jack ten, ten, nine.
Jack ten, Queen Jack, ace three.
Gotta be at least half pot if you do that.
Oh my god.
See if we fold a better hand. The mini bluff in position, too. What is that?
Okay, so it is like.
We get better king eyes to fold.
This is not Matt, Matt Affleck approved.
That would be getting him off like under pairs, I think, and stuff like that, too.
A better king. Like king nine.
Old king nine.
Laser targeted against king nine. Like, I know you're gonna call me with a bunch of other crap, but like, I just, I can't.
It has to be king nine, we have king nine.
But there's some other stuff, under pairs, a weak ten, like if he has like ten eight of clubs, is he stationed enough? I don't know.
Snaps with fives.
I think, you, you don't mean ten eight of clubs, you mean ten nine.
Oh my god, I was close. I was so close.
We're out there trying to play fancy.
We made him think so.
Me grinder, man.
We made him really think hard.
But that's a nice thing about bluffing small, it's like, you're gonna get what you're targeting to fold for small, and then you lose less when he's got a. A tr- like a trap, quote unquote.
What are we doing here against under the gun one? If it was one of these two, it's an easy jam. Now it's just a call? And which?
Maybe a call, you raised more suited jacks, but like, I think you. Yeah.
You might jam still. Some.
I can see that.
No.
Yeah, jam is competitive in EV, it's quite close. Like Queen Jack is a stone cold jam, right?
Queen Jack, King ten, King Jack.
Yeah.
What about Queen ten? That's usually calling, right?
Yeah, calling against AP, jamming against.
Uh, okay, how about Jack ten of uh?
Okay, so I'm gonna call here and Scotty, you play the rest of the hand.
Alright. Oh, oh, this just got easy. Uh, check behind, we don't need to bet the jack.
Easy, right?
Yeah, I agree, basically. We're gonna bet, we're gonna bet tiny.
Value, now we're gonna bet for.
This is where I get in trouble.
We're gonna bet thin value, and we're gonna bet right around the fifty percent. We don't have a fifty percent, so we're betting sixty-four.
I'm so sure we're checking.
Yeah, I want to check.
Boo.
The value is smaller, smaller is better, look at how much EV.
But what, what do we get value from?
You can bet King Jack. Oh no, you can't, it's a chop. Oh, it's a chop. Jackson fives with an ace kicker. Do we bet any Jack then? Maybe not. No. We bet any ace, we don't bet any.
We're betting no Jack.
Okay.
Maybe there's, maybe there's some weird blocker effect we do.
Maybe.
Low jack, king jack.
Mixed call and raise, frequency. Twenty-five percent raise?
I'll take the over.
I will.
Forty-six percent raise.
What do you feel like playing Louis? Oh, it's almost not.
So at sixty, I think it should, it'd be like a lot more of a raise on it.
Probably.
We got to do two overs.
Good morning.
I'm lousy at these offsuit broadways. I need to get better. Um, small bet, we have overs, no spade, backdoor stuff.
That's a backdoor straights. We call.
Yeah, I think so.
Both, both nutty-ish.
I think raised to five point eighty-five is good, no?
No. That's not enough. We'll just fold, we don't have a spade.
I think we're too shallow to be raising their setups. We're gonna um. We can't really like bluff the turn without being. Kind of all in-ish. I like a call here.
A call? Okay, do you have three bets?
For sure.
Slivers or?
Not, not with this hand, with better, better aces.
I actually think this one three bets a fair bit.
The most, right?
Cut off, yeah, like. Versus cutoff, it's like most of them, I was gonna say a seven, yeah.
Yeah, better races.
Wow, not just the wheels.
Yeah, like the ace deuce and the ace three. Really want the big blind to get in and cooler for sixty big blinds in flush over flush here. Right? Or trips over trips, even if it comes three, two deuces or something. And the cutoff is also really wide in their suited range, so like our really small aces don't want to push against a bigger ace. So you want like more, like ace six wants the three bet here more than ace deuce. This is the scenario you want.
Right.
Uh, fucking weird.
That's small?
Yep, thirty-three.
Everything's fine. Wow, not much small.
No, it's a check or bed big. So, it doesn't polarize very often here.
Our hand doesn't mind betting small, but our range doesn't want that in its strategy, I guess. Yeah.
It's rare that the button is polarizing like that.
But you can see it's kind of the reverse, like ace deuce and ace four now really want to go big. Ace five and ace six and ace seven are more checking. Because they were three betting with that part of the range earlier. Can you see the C bet, the cutoff C bet strategy? That might um give us a little insight, too.
Because usually the button is always like fifty-fifty. Checking, betting small. Taking it easy, you know? But I don't know why it polarizes so much here. Capo, you here?
Yeah.
Do you see this?
I have a little bit of an answer, it's kind of like Jack ten though, like Queen ten though is similar, there's just like, both players are lit up with top pairs, gut shots, flush draws.
So this is cutoff versus button?
Yeah, the button is polarizing on this texture.
Um, yeah. Usually versus late position, it's typically a smaller uh probe. Or float back, but maybe because of the two broadways.
Yeah, change it to queen seven deuce, and I'm sure it's gonna be tiny, right? Because I want there to be, now there's still a bottom gut shot, yeah, yeah.
I know two broadways versus EP, it's definitely a polarized strat. Um, I thought typically versus like late position, late position, mostly small floats. But obviously there's some. Other textures to change it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's nuance, but to a large extent, like to a first approximation, these spots look like in position C betting spots, like that's kind of. Sort of looks like your range if you were button versus big blind, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, like Jack ten low button versus big blind is a range bet small. So it's pretty different.
That versus big blind, right?
Or, or, maybe not button versus big blind, maybe I'm, maybe it's only EP versus big blind. Or you range bet small. Could be mistaken. Okay, so contested board, we can't just like auto bet small, so we gotta polarize a little bit.
I think we want to, also the dap, the sizes just like creep up as um, as we're, we start the hand sixty big ones effective.
This is a single raise pot?
Check. Yeah, we check a lot, because we don't want to get raised, right?
Cutoff's uncapped, I was gonna say, if this is a single raise pot, did they check flop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we bet, so like, they can theoretically still have ace king.
Yeah, Queen Jack and like all the two pairs and every, everything, it's all there.
I like the, I like our check back, but we did pick up equity with that jack.
We need to get a side to fold.
Yeah, and the spade, you want to realize, I think, on that turn a lot, too, you want to make sure you realize your equity a lot, this hand.
What's a good amount to get a side to fold?
Uh, but like.
I'm showing this now.
Weird to be bluffing against ace high versus ace high.
Also Louis, most aces have a pair.
Yeah, but not all, ace five.
Yeah, you can get some low aces.
We chop with low aces.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
Ace eight, ace eight and ace nine block the straight.
So you don't try to get a side to fold here with that like a little eight?
I don't.
But like, I don't know.
Just show down, I mean.
Wait, 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 hold on, before you click it, which ace highs is he calling a big bet flop with that? We are losing to and will fold.
Ace five of hearts.
Ace five of hearts.
Yes.
That might check raise a decent amount. I guess all spades are check raising, right? So, and you can't have them, hearts might check raise.
Like, I'm almost on, on board, because I think potentially a, some under pairs will have been sticky, like pocket sixes may have been sticky. But I think it's, there's not enough better stuff that will fold.
Have we, have we raised a pre-flop, or we just go?
So if we bluff and we're targeting like sixes and stuff, uh, if, it's probably, it can be, you probably only gotta go like fifty-seven percent. Like if we're bluffing, I think that's our size. But I'm stoked to show this down.
Okay, well, I'm betting fifty-seven to try to get a better ace to fold.
I would check.
Well, who decides?
There you go.
And then do we get an ace?
Are good. Does he have ace five of hearts? Let's see what he has, like.
Or he has some like mid pairs still, right?
Hmm, ace seven is folding, he's folding a seven, ace ten might be folding.
Eight, nines are supposed to fold.
Eight, nines.
Ace ten off, it's a lot of hands.
Bears of sevens are folding. So the.
Six on the board.
Spade draws.
Yeah.
The Jack six must be just spades.
Yeah.
Um, no six on the board, Ken. So.
He's smoking a jack there?
Queen ten, three.
Yeah.
It was the follow.
Yeah, the machine is.
On a good day.
Wow. That's great.
Okay, so it's not, just so you know Louis, for the future, the point of your bet, you're not trying to make a size fold there. You're trying to get him off a pair, so keep that in mind.
Well, yeah, because also, because like.
Fold a jack.
Yeah, but Danny, my opponent, if he, if he's like down the rabbit hole with ace five. I'm gonna get him.
Yeah, and LP. Yeah, LP's gonna jam. He's gonna target the ace highs with a jam.
But I wanted to say there, like, if if we really believe that our primary value or bluff target is is higher, then we would like to not hold nace, right?
Mm-hmm, that too.
Let's fold this.
Yeah, full check to know.
Yeah.
I'm always down to fold check ten.
Let's call.
Oh, my God. Rebuy.
We're in the trenches, Tim.
Oh, we're betting.
See, here we go.
We have we have interactivity. We have a spade.
There we go.
We have a backdoor to the nut straight. It's not really our card, but we still have no showdown value and we still have a spade blocker for the front door. I'm okay with going for it.
Wanna go?
And the other simple argument is just didn't pick up equity, time to give up.
We didn't need to pick up equity. We had equity the whole time.
We have equity.
All right, you look at this. Let's bet that equity.
Shoot your way out, Scotty.
All right, here we go.
See, I was crabby about bluffing queen high earlier, but like left jack high? Hell, yeah.
Okay, so I'm good here. We can bluff.
All of it.
No.
Yep.
Twenty-two, no? Hmm. What does all of it accomplish that twenty-two thousand?
It allows us to lose the tournament faster?
Yeah, we can rebuy and get on with our lives rather than having to play a rather than having to play a fifteen big blind stack.
See?
It's in there. It's in there.
See, because it's the same, right? You just put a blast and he's folding his uh.
I really like I really like it, Louis. I like that we have a little bit left.
Yeah. In case.
Oh, and this is chip EV, but if you give.
No way. No way.
Uh, we should have jammed. He would have pulled.
He actually might have. That's exactly the kind of hand that might hold your damn. But yeah, if you give yourself just even mild I C M like at the beginning of the tournament and being able to keep a fifteen big blind stack, it's kind of valuable.
Just a call here.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, ten night suit is a good call.
Do we three bet this ever?
No.
No, we we're three betting, what, like queen eight, jack eight? I don't think we're really three betting much. There comes. Because we're three betting pocket tens at some frequency and we're three betting some ace ten off, so those are our ten.
This looks like you're dirty treating me.
I don't hate it. I can imagine fifty-five as well, but.
I think as crazy as it sounds, you can also check. But I would mainly bet.
How happy are you face? How happy are you to face a check raise?
Very happy.
I mean, obviously not. We have a we have a bluff, so like, you know.
Yeah, a lot of checking.
Like your buffs are never happy in case check raise, but.
Whoa.
Like, that's not the side of the game tree that we're interested in.
Well, it can help you with your bluff selection if uh if you're you have decent equity, but you're very unhappy to face a check raise, you might wanna check some.
Yeah, sure, but I think like I I think implemented wrongly, that can dissuade you from like a lot of your bluff that you actually should be using.
Look at this night.
It sucks. It sucks to be a check raised, and that's just like, that's life. It's great when you have value. It sucks when you have a bluff.
How appealing is this?
Seems very good.
Nope.
Oh, Peter.
Wow.
Peter is on the heater.
Gotta keep him in wide here. This is this is kind of the middle of range. This is below your value and above your bluff.
Oh.
Right, you gotta keep him in. True, but on the offsuit side, it's not as clearly polarized. On the suited side, it's clearly polarized. On the offsuit side, it has some like equity denial kind of stuff. Um, you know, you.
Look how deep down the tree his range contains jacks and kings.
Oh, it's because we're short.
Wait, wait, Louis, you're at big blind. Go back to button.
Yeah, go go to cutoff and look how wide he's opening with jacks and kings.
Yeah, we just don't three bet. That's the real thing, though. But like, take this up to thirty or thirty-five and you're gonna see it come back.
Right? Look at all those suited kings that we are crushing. And all those suited jacks, like when he went a jack or a king flops and we have a a stack depth where he's going to want to go all in. Like, king jack is just gonna own all of the worst kings and jacks that he gets here with.
So it's like under his value and then above his bluffs, so you wanna just call.
Can you click it up to thirty-five?
Thirty-five is, I just looked, it's where it starts uh three betting it a lot.
Let's see how it, yeah.
It's like the whole offsuit Broadway does it a little bit and more. Yeah. That's the page I'm looking at right now.
Interesting.
There's another wrinkle here, which is it it comes back in I C M spots, so you know, and we never played chip B tournaments.
Just because you don't wanna call as much in general.
Exactly, and you just like, you know, you get some valuable folds from like low pairs and some ace acts.
Also, won't like king nine suited call you and stuff like that?
Exactly.
But I guess you do fold out some king seven, king six.
I guess I'm okay with betting this on flop, but not that excited about it.
I would check.
I mean, I think our I think our whole range is gonna bet small a fair bit. But.
Hmm. Yeah, okay.
Isn't this kind of a polar board or no?
Kind of is, yeah. I don't think so, because I think that bottom straight draw is kind of irrelevant. I looked it up. It's like it's mainly using the two sides and it is pretty distributed all over.
Okay. Gotta check now.
Some concentration on like ten X and over pairs and stuff.
I mean, do we have to check? I think.
I don't.
This hand wants to check.
Yeah, exactly. Best unpaired hand nearly, right?
What would we bet with ace four? We just bet six, right?
Yeah.
Man, that's annoying. I uh.
Going into this.
Yeah, let me think. Do we ever jam? Is that ridiculous? I think call is good.
That's.
I think in game we need to always. And against a machine, it's always a call.
But like also there's check, check on flop. We blocked the straight. I think it's an easy call.
I'm not really much going all in.
No, never.
We do do it a little.
Surprisingly enough, we're beat.
Twenty-five effective, we can let eight, seven suited go, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you put a little bit of I C M in, that that call will just disappear.
Yeah.
And it doesn't need to be a lot, like really just a little bit. Like we've got seventy-five percent chance and it's gone.
Yeah, fold. Uh, we got a suited seven. It's gonna mainly flat still, right? But you can definitely mix the three bet twenty percent.
Yeah, I think I think the raise is like all the way up to ace eight, maybe against U T G at seven frequency.
What pushes what pushes the three bet up to eight compared to rather than six point nine or seven?
Or I guess not the size, the stacked up.
Depth.
Okay.
Yeah, we should um and that's actually something we should take into our games, um. Like you see so often people three bet to three X and then like the other person needs to calls. It's kind of a sign that you have a bad sizing.
Fair.
This could be a check, right? It could be a big bet. It'd be a.
We three bet. I'm not really that excited about big betting this hand. Give me something above the ten maybe, and then we can talk about it like ace jack.
Quarter pot seems right.
It's in the quarter.
Yeah.
Checking.
Half pots, half pots kind of bad. Checking's fine.
Yeah, check's fine. Makes sense. I think we could go either way with it again. Mike, you're off mute, by the way. Just giggling over there.
Oh, yeah. I've been, I didn't realize that mic on. Sorry, I was.
Sorry. I mean, the nine links some of our. Yeah, go to him.
Listen, you got a glass. I have competing impulses. On the one hand, it's like a lot of dry stuff can give us action now, and it's not gonna give us action on river or it's gonna get there on river. Um, so like we can get action from spades and queen jack and king jack and queen queen kind of hands. But also like we're kind of just isolating ourselves against better aces and two pairs and sets at some point, and that's not that exciting.
I like to check back all the river. And.
I like that, too.
Unless a spade comes, in which case, look at the size of his bet.
We were already mixing flop, so it's like one of our worst aces, right? So now now that we didn't check flop, we probably should check turn.
Yeah, I mean, if we'd gone check, check on the flop, we could bet the turn. We're betting either the flop or the turn and not both.
I think that's generally true.
And then, yeah, catch almost any river we can catch.
And I think we could even bet turn with a heart, because then like we just have a lot of equity.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like ace, jack and better will bet here.
Oh.
And we're supposed to bluff catch.
Oh.
Easy catch.
Yep, we're not excited about it, but.
Oh.
I'm excited. We're gonna win.
Okay, it's worth that.
Oh, my gosh, how do we lose?
Shocking, playing a nerd again.
Like, it's like playing S L P.
Yeah, call her. Art three bet our gold claim.
Oh. Hmm.
Can we find this hand and this board into a B fifty-five?
Um.
Just a bit small, I think.
Should be a polar board, no?
That's the thing. I think there's gonna be some both. Yeah, some both. Because there's the gutter and there's very strong hands with ace and king, so.
And the board is and it's and it's a it's a two-tone.
It's kind of his board, right? It's his. So if we're gonna bet on his board, we wanna big bet, don't we? With a polar range.
What what was what was the sizes that it suggested?
It's all over.
Okay.
And our strategy mainly was also all over.
Okay, lots and we have lots of the big bet. Okay, good.
This is the.
Wait, you. Louis, you changed it. Now he's clicking us.
Huh?
You changed the action and now he's clicking us.
Uh, did he?
It is all over.
Oh, damn it. Perfect.
I can imagine going with this. I can also imagine doing this as a stop and go.
And just go. No.
No.
This is.
Don't don't shake the fish off the hook.
Yeah.
I'm shaking the.
Stop and go.
Hook.
Probably because we're in position, we have two more fails.
Yeah, and it's gonna be super. I think if we're gonna have a jamming range on flop, it's gonna be like ace clean without a spade. That's my prediction.
Are you betting here?
Yep.
Yeah, just rip it.
I don't know. Keep the fish on the line.
Wait. Whoa. Huh? Peter, you saw this coming?
Yeah, yeah, you gotta keep the fish on the line. There we go.
It's a thing in these solve solutions. You just like really have to slow down a little bit.
R is it's.
They don't just jam when the S P R is one. Yeah, it's a thing.
It's not one. It's it's half. It's like sixty percent hot.
There too.
Different.
All right. Fish us, call.
He radically lets them find some bluff to river, value some hands, maybe.
Yeah.
Let them spaz. All right, that's a new one for me. I'm gonna start mixing that in when I when I have that spot, if ever.
I looked up, I looked up that flop spot where we get clicked and yeah, the uh the jamming range is is not two pairs, not sets, it's ace nine plus.
Right, because we're so shallow, those those hands are so good. You're never gonna fold them anyway.
Exactly, especially even more at ace jack, ace queen. Ace queen is just nuts, but also it's not really that exciting to play three streets.
And so when you have a two pair and better, you don't you don't jam it. You call.
Yeah, you call in position.
S P R is too low.
And that was a big mistake for us. That's a sixty big blind per hundred mistake in solver.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm over here clicking you with jack ten and then you just let me off.
Yeah, and if you like, of course, you have to have some things go right, like you need a turn, maybe you turn a ten, it goes check, check or something, then river, maybe you got another bet out of it.
We just fold here?
You have a spade. I don't think you've lost enough money yet.
With a spade, you probably.
You haven't lost enough money yet, Louis.
Ah.
No, he has like ace jack. Check back. Ace is pretty bad. Let's check back.
We be.
Come on, let's win. Let's win.
Ah, not that.
All right, guys, I think we're gonna wrap it up for on this.